Withdrawn at that time.
And welcome to Gavel to Gavel, WCVW-TV's complete coverage of Richmond City Council. Good evening once again. I'm Dick Harmon. We're a little bit late getting on tonight because the informal meeting ran a lot longer than we expected. There was a presentation by the school board, which took considerable time, then going over the agenda items. That took some time as well. Some questions being brought back and forth and back and forth. We'll try and go through what's going on tonight. And we're having some technical difficulties, so you'll be looking at me tonight doing as we go through the consent agenda. Now, we're only going to go through the items that will be heard tonight. I'll try and do a brief of what are not going to be heard, but we'll be going a little more detailed ones that will be heard because there's a lot of changes tonight. We started out with 27 items. That won't be the case when we get done. Item one is ordinance 2014-93. Let's establish an advisory task force for economic revitalization in South Richmond. Continued till March 9th. Item two, ordinance 2014-131, concerning deferred retirement option programs, continued till March 9th. Item three, ordinance 2014-208. This is to establish a Richmond Archaeological Commission, continued till February 23rd. Item four, ordinance 2014-217, establishing a downtown tourism zone, continued until February 23rd. Item five, ordinance 2015-1. This establishes a program under which certain blocks in the city shall be designated by the name of a city resident from the council determined to have made extraordinary contributions to African-American history. That one's going to be continued till the 9th. There will be an amendment, by the way, made to that. And that's going to be a special meeting on February 2nd, which we will most likely not be carrying on WCVW-TV. Item number six, ordinance 2015-2. And this is renaming the Manchester Courthouse, the Henry L. Marsh III and Harold M. Marsh Sr. Manchester Courthouse. That stays on consent. Item seven, ordinance 2015-3. And that's authorizing the CAO to execute a standard project administration agreement between the city and VDOT for funding money for Franklin Street and Main Street Cycle Track Project. That's going to be continued till February 9th, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting, by the way. Item eight, ordinance 2014-4. Authorizing the Greater Richmond Chamber to encroach upon public right of way. This so they can put decorative art sculptures on the city-owned bicycle racks at various locations throughout the city. That one will stay on the consent agenda. They're not changing the bicycle racks, they're just putting decorative sculptures on the racks. So all part of beautifying Richmond. That stays on consent. Item nine, ordinance 2015-6. This authorizes the CAO to accept $240,000 from VDOT to establish a new project for Franklin and Main Street Cycle Track Project. That's continued till February 9th. Item 10, ordinance 2015-7. And this is exempting real estate, from real estate taxation, certain dwellings of surviving spouses of members of the armed forces killed in action. The only change to that was they want, all members of council want to sponsor that paper. And so it will stay on consent with the blessing of all members of council. Now, item 11, ordinance 2015-8. This authorizes the CAO to accept $252,449 from GRTC, etc. This goes appropriate money to Richmond Memorial Health Foundation. This one's going to be continued for four weeks. It'll be heard on February 23rd. Item 12, ordinance 2015-9. And this accepts $79,204 from the Richmond City Health District to appropriate $62,500 for the Richmond Area High Blood Pressure Center. And that stays on consent. Item 13, ordinance 2015-10. Authorizes the CAO to execute a property agreement or project agreement for use of Commonwealth transportation funds. This is basically to receive money. It's for the purpose of receiving a $600,000 grant. This is for Phase 3 improvements at Main Street Station. Item 14, pretty much the same thing, ordinance 2015-11. And this is also receiving federal funding of $2.4 million for Phase 3 improvements to Main Street Station. So both papers accepting money for Main Street Station. Item 15, 2015-12. And that's a consent agreement by Warwick Talhalms of its right title and interest in a performance agreement plan. This basically is just going from one name to another, as near as I can tell that. But anyhow, it stays on consent agenda. Item 16, ordinance 2015-13. This amends a pay plan for classifications, the council liaison, court assistant, secretary of the judges circuit court within the classified service. And item number 17, ordinance 2015-14. Also changes the pay scale for the classification of council budget analyst, council financial, fiscal analysis. This are the items. And they both stay on consent. Items 18 and 19, these are imposing enhanced speeding penalties on Chapel Drive and Maguire Drive during certain blocks. Those are being continued until the 9th of February. Item 20, and this is to request the mayor seek regional participation in the city's efforts to develop a minor league baseball stadium in the city of Richmond. That's being continued till our next regularly scheduled meeting, and that is on February 9th. Now, this is not build a stadium. It does not say where it's going to go. It's just asking the mayor to see if he can get the other counties, surrounding counties, to participate in developing a minor league baseball stadium. Doesn't say it's going to be here or there or anything else. Just saying, Mr. Mayor, would you all see if we can get some cooperation from the other counties? That stays on, that's being continued till February 9th. Item 21 and 22 are just expenditures from council district funds for the 6th district. They stay on consent. Regular agenda, let's see. Item 23, ordinance 2014-199. To prohibit the use of certain instruments in the training or control of elephants, cruelly animals, etc. That's being continued till the 9th of February. Item 24, ordinance 2014-254. This is executing a stone brewery cooperation agreement between the city and the Economic Development Authority. That's going to be amended and continued. The amendment will come in tonight. The continuance will be to the special meeting on February 2nd. Item 25, resolution 2014-R258. Reversing the decision of a commission of architectural review that denied a certificate of appropriateness with a proposed painting of the exterior brick portions of a condominium located at 407 North Allen. Continued till February 23rd. Item 26, resolution 2014-R264. And this is establishing a policy the city intends to replenish school maintenance projects. In other words, if it falls below $2 million, they'll make up the difference kind of thing. So they will have millions in their projects. That's being continued till the 23rd of February. And also, item number 27, resolution 2015-R4. And this will be transferring a portion of the $10,602,230 appropriated to the SHACO Infrastructure Improvement Project to maintenance and school board maintenance fund. That also is going to be continued because there's some talk, they will go back and forth on this, get some things ironed out. So that'll be continued as well. Okay, so now where do we stand on tonight's agenda? Well, we started out with 22 items on consent. 11 are being continued, so we're down to 11 there. We have five items on the regular agenda. Four are being continued. One's being amended and continued. So we're basically left now with nothing on the regular agenda except one amendment paper to be introduced. Have not gotten a list of speakers. The last time I saw, we had two speakers signed up. That could change. We have not gotten a list on that as yet. In the awards and recognitions, we do have the Richmond African-American History Month Joint Proclamation that'll be received by Maryland West, and that is the only awards and presentations we have for tonight. So we got a late start. We'll probably have a little bit late start getting started with tonight's regular city council meeting. And how long will it last? We don't know. We'll find out once we get started. We'll be getting started in just a couple of minutes. I'm Dick Harmon. Stay tuned.
Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting will now come to order. At this time, the invocation will be given by Reverend Samuel Patterson of Holy Rosary Catholic Church.
Let's stand, please. Most gracious God, make all men and women witnesses of truth, justice, and brotherly love, ban it from their hearts whatever might endanger peace. Thank you for enlaving us together here today, enlighten this body of people that you have deemed to lead this great city, so that they can guarantee and defend the great gift of peace. It is true that we realize and recognize that you covered the business of this great city, which can be conducted. Grant us the courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the need of all people and fulfill their obligations in this great community. Please wrap your arms around all of us with our everyday problems, our weaknesses, our deficiencies, our cries, and our personal shortcomings. Help us to stand fast and cherish the goodwill of others. With this grace, obtain justice for us, safeguard peace in this great city, and most of all, bind us together in the spirit of love which represents all things, and in your precious name we pray and give you thanks. Amen.
And we recite the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please provide the chamber emergency evacuation announcement?
Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chamber, or the east or west stairwells outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot bordered by Clay, Eighth, and Ninth Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Citizens wishing to speak during public hearings and/or the citizen comment period have generally three minutes to speak. Persons appearing before council are not allowed to campaign from public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the president of council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary action as necessary, which could include barring from attendance at future meetings of the city council for a period up to six months.
Madam President, for the record, all members of council are in attendance this evening.
Thank you. At this time, I am asking that the council will have a moment of silence for Vice Mayor Carl Mike Ross, who passed away on Friday. Mr. Ross served on the Petersburg City Council for more than a decade, and prior to that, six years as a member of the Petersburg Public School Board. Mr. Ross was a man who lived a life of service and purpose, and during this time, our thoughts and prayers are with his family and the entire Petersburg community. As we mourn his passing and celebrate and honor a man who dedicated his life to community, may we all be inspired and instructed by his dedication. A moment, please.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I believe there are no appointments or reappointments for consideration this evening.
That is correct.
So let's move on to the awards and presentations, please.
Tonight's recognition being presented by the Honorable Council President Michelle Mosby and Mayor Dwight C. Jones recognizes February 2015 as Richmond African American History Month. A national month observing African American history in February was established in 1976 by President of the United States Gerald R. Ford, and every American president thereafter has proclaimed the month of February on behalf of African American history. The history of the world has shown that continued human progress and the success of society and civilization has been built on a foundation of inclusiveness and diversity of social and racial identity. Embracing and celebrating our individual and communal racial and cultural identities and commonalities as Americans helps to further bring everyone together and to drive the development of our society. In order to recognize, honor, and celebrate the important contributions in history of people of African American descent in Richmond and the United States of America, Richmond City Council and Mayor Dwight C. Jones hereby proclaim February 2015 to be Richmond African American History Month, and call this observance to the attention of all Richmond residents, and encourages everyone to join together in commemorating this worthy observance and taking the opportunity to learn more about African American history.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am honored to be here today to name February Richmond's African American Month. There have been so many that have gone before us. We stand here with this great lady today, and we have had so many such as Maggie Walker. We've had many that have come before us and talked about Maggie Walker, but she was the first African American woman that founded a bank in the United States. That's a big deal. We've had so many others that have followed her. We've had athletes, Willie Lanier, and he was a professional football player, and we've had Arthur S. Junior, and he was a professional tennis player. It's just been so many, and I could go on and on, I could go on and on. But I just am so excited to be a part of this. I'm usually sitting out there, but today I get an opportunity to be a part of the celebration of celebrating our African Americans during Black History Month. Thank you.
Madam President, and members of council, and those who were present here tonight, what a delight it is to be a part of this African American Month proclamation. In 1963, Dr. Martin Luther King talked about his dream, and that dream has become a part of the audacious hope that Americans have, but particularly African Americans, have in this country today. And we recognize that fifty years later, that that dream is in limbo for many Americans, which means that we have to work even harder now than we have ever worked before to make sure that generations that are following understand the struggle and understand the fight and understand what has been put into making this country what it is today. And when I look at the city of Richmond, I see living proof and evidence of persons who have been a part of making this dream a reality. And tonight, we have the wonderful opportunity to have Marilyn West here to accept this proclamation, and it reminds us of the restoration of the armory on Lee Street that's being transformed as we speak into the Black History Museum, which will be a depository for all of the wonderful things that will represent what African Americans have done, and it will be a central location where we can go to celebrate and to teach our children the wonderful history that this city has. It will also be one of the driving engines for the renovation of Jackson Ward, which is also a vital part of our history here in this city. And so this is a wonderful evening. Also, we're very happy, I'm very happy, to have gotten support from city council in making this African American History Month very special by having streets named after the first five African American city council members that changed the trajectory of history in our city, and also the Manchester Court Building, named after Henry Marsh, who was in attendance here tonight, and Harold Marsh, two pioneers in the city of Richmond. And so I think that tonight is a night for us all to recognize the importance to make sure that we gather young people around us, and that we instruct them, that we inspire them, that we mentor them, that we are sure that they know that freedom isn't free, and that this has been a difficult road that needs to be remembered by us all. So thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. On behalf of the Black History Museum Board of Directors, we are just so proud to be able to work with the city of Richmond. We appreciate all of your support. We're moving forward, and we're just can't wait till we can roll out and be part and be in our new home on Lee Street still, and we're going to continue to have the double O. Lee Street address. So we're really very proud, and there are so many people in Richmond and Virginia that we need to thank for working with us and being the pioneers that allow us to really honor the memory of so many here in Richmond particularly and in Virginia. So thank you very much again. You all have said it all, and it really is very helpful when someone says it in advance for you. Thank you again.
Madam President, that concludes our awards and presentations for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Unless there is an objection from council members, we will have citizen comment period following the reports and announcement later this evening. Any objection? Thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move on to the review of the amendments to tonight's agenda.
Amendments to tonight's agenda are as follows. Item one, ordinance number 2014 dash ninety-three, and item two, ordinance number 2014 dash one thirty-one will be continued to the Monday, March ninth council meeting. Item three, ordinance number 2014 dash two oh eight, and item four, ordinance number 2014 dash two seventeen will be continued to the Monday, February twenty-third council meeting. Item five, ordinance number 2015 dash one will be continued to the Monday, February second special meeting. Item seven, ordinance number 2015 dash three, and item nine, ordinance number 2015 dash six will be continued to the Monday, February ninth council meeting. Item eleven, ordinance number 2015 dash eight will be continued to the Monday, February twenty-third council meeting. Item eighteen, resolution number 2014 dash R one forty-nine, and item nineteen, resolution number 2014 dash R one fifty, will be continued to the Monday, February ninth council meeting. Item twenty, resolution number 2014 dash R one eighty-one will be continued to the Monday, February ninth council meeting. Item twenty-three, ordinance number 2014 dash one ninety-nine will be continued to the Monday, February ninth council meeting. Item twenty-four, ordinance number 2014 dash two fifty-four will be amended and continued to the Monday, February second special meeting later this evening. Item twenty-five, resolution number 2014 dash R two fifty-eight, and item twenty-six, resolution number 2014 dash R two sixty-four will both be continued to the Monday, February twenty-third council meeting. Item twenty-seven, resolution number 2015 dash R four will also be continued to the Monday, February twenty-third council meeting. Madam President, those are all of tonight's agenda amendments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does any member of council have any additional amendments to tonight's agenda? Madam Clerk, please call the question.
I will need a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented. Councilor Bilalz, will you make that motion?
No, no.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council is voting on tonight's agenda amendments as presented. Mr. Bilalz.
Aye.
Ms. Graziano.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels.
Aye.
Mr. Agilasco.
Aye.
Ms. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Trammell.
Aye.
Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert.
Aye.
President Mosby.
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please provide a review of items on tonight's consent agenda.
Madam President, the consent agenda items for tonight are as follows. Item six, ordinance number 2015 dash two, to rename the Manchester Courthouse as the Henry L. Marsh III and Harold M. Marsh Senior Manchester Courthouse. Item eight, ordinance number 2015 dash four, to authorize the Greater Richmond Chamber of Commerce to encroach upon the public right of way by affixing decorative art sculptures to city-owned bicycle racks throughout the city. Item ten, ordinance number 2015 dash seven, to amend the city code by adding new sections ninety-eight dash one thirty-one point two and ninety-eight dash one thirty-one point three, for the purpose of exempting from real estate taxation, certain dwellings of the surviving spouses of members of the armed forces killed in action. Item twelve, ordinance number 2015 dash nine, to accept seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and four dollars from the Richmond City Health District to appropriate sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to the Richmond Area High Blood Pressure Center for the purpose of providing a grant to the center to continue care for individuals who have or are at risk of developing hypertension, high cholesterol, and diabetes, and to appropriate sixteen thousand, seven hundred and four dollars to the Office of the Deputy C.A.O. for Human Services. Item thirteen, ordinance number 2015 dash ten, to execute an agreement for use of Commonwealth Transportation Funds between the city and the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation to receive a grant of six hundred thousand dollars to fund Phase Three improvements to Main Street Station. Item fourteen, ordinance number 2015 dash eleven, to execute an agreement between the city and the Federal Transit Administration for the purpose of receiving federal funding of two point four million dollars to fund Phase Three improvements to Main Street Station. Item fifteen, ordinance number 2015 dash twelve, to consent to the assignment by Warwick Town Homes LLC of its right, title, and interest in a performance agreement dated November twentieth of 2014 between the city, the Economic Development Authority, and Warwick Town Homes LLC to New Warwick Town Homes LLC. Item sixteen, ordinance number 2014 dash 2015 dash thirteen, to amend the pay plan to move the classifications of council liaison, court assistant, and secretary to judges of the circuit court from various general pay ranges to various general pay bands within the unclassified service, and to create the new classifications of Parks Naturalists and Chief of Security and Safety within the classified service. Item seventeen, ordinance number 2015 dash fourteen, to amend the pay plan to change the pay scale for the classifications of council budget analysts, council fiscal analysts, and council policy analysts from general pay range nineteen to general pay band six. Item twenty-one, resolution number 2015 dash R two, to approve nineteen dollars and ninety-eight cents from the council district funds to pay the Department of Information Technology for the distribution of letters to six district civic organizations. Item twenty-two, resolution number 2015 dash R three, to approve two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-nine cent from the council district funds to pay the Department of Information Technology for the printing of six district flyers. Those are all of the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now have a public hearing on the consent agenda. Are there any persons who wish to speak in opposition of any items on the consent agenda? agenda?
Yeah, I'm one of the people, and I'm a man. I'm certainly not a citizen or a person. So, I'm going to speak into this microphone now. I pose everything. We'll start with this Warwick Town Home LLC deal.
Mr. Dorsey.
It's...
Sorry, but I need you to speak your name for me, please. It's for the record, it's the rules of the council.
You just called me Mr. Dorsey. Right. So, like, yeah. So, I'm just going to go ahead and I'm going to speak against all of these criminal items because basically regardless of what kind of obfuscation you all put forward, everything...
Speak your name for the council.
I'm sorry, you're out of order.
I need, no, sir, I need you to speak your name for the public.
If you need me to do something, then you have an issue because, like, you know, I decide what I do.
Mr. Dorsey, it's the third time that I'm going to ask you to speak your name, please, for the record. Please.
I mean, I'm not, like, I'm called a number of things, but I am not going to say my name to you because according to you, it does not matter. I'm a man, I'm one of the people, and I'm one of the...
Chris, you out of here. Say your name, say your name. Do as she asks. If not, they will come down here and they will remove you.
Well, I'm sitting down. That's great. My name is... Hello, hello. My name's Silver Persinger. I'm a man, too. I'd like to speak in opposition to the naming of the Court's Building after Henry Marsh. Existing city code says that the naming of buildings and public structures shall not be named after living individuals, with rare exception until after five years after their death. And I think that's a policy you all should enforce. It's your existing policy. If any of you all can give me an exceptional reason why Mr. Marsh's name should be added to the Court's Building at this time, I would be most welcome to hear that. But he isn't in a hospital, he's not sick or dying. Well, he's dying the same way we're all dying, but I don't see what is exceptional about this time. I wish you all would follow your own rules. You know, it's funny, you asked Mr. Dorsey to identify himself because you don't want to identify members of boards and commissions anymore. I'd also like to speak in opposition to the placing of the decorative art on the bicycle racks provided by the Greater Richmond Chamber of Commerce. The Greater Richmond Chamber of Commerce is a business organization made up of businessmen and women that seek to influence the government to their benefit. I'm particularly concerned that this public art will not be notated as being provided to the city by the Greater Richmond Chamber of Commerce, Altria, and the other corporate sponsors that are providing this artwork. This artwork is selected by a committee put together by the Greater Richmond Chamber of Commerce and did not include this body and did not include the public. And I'm sure ultimately the Greater Richmond Chamber could have picked any of the submissions it pleased. So, those are two items I have, or two items of contention I have with tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persinger. Bringing it back to council. I'm sorry, is there anybody in favor of the consent agenda? I apologize. Bringing it back to council.
Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Trammell.
I'd like to say that I'm in support of all the papers and that I also would like to ask my chief of staff, Lou Ali, to please assign someone from our office to, I would like to rename the city hall after L. Douglas Wilder. L. Douglas Wilder was the first African American governor. He was also the first African American mayor of this city. And we know that back in the day, he fought a lot of battles being the first African American governor. And I know that when he was the mayor of this city, he did a lot for our city, not only for all the citizens here, but also for the business people. And also, I just read a thing in a paper the other day where they honored the governor and mayor Wilder. And also, there was a little piece in the paper about the citizen that referred to him as a gentleman.
Ms. Trammell.
And also, I'm asking that, I would like for this city hall to be named in honor of L. Douglas Wilder. Thank you. And I'm in support of the papers.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you call it a question, please?
Council is voting on tonight's consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Bilalz.
Aye.
Ms. Graziano.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels.
Aye.
Mr. Agulhasco.
Aye.
Ms. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Trammell.
Aye.
Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert.
Aye.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Madam Clerk, if I'm correct, do we have anything on our regular agenda? No, we have no regular agenda items for consideration this evening. Madam Clerk, are there papers to be amended and continued this evening? Yes, we have one motion to amend and continue. That is item number 24 on the agenda, ordinance number 2014-254. That's to amend ordinance number 2014-237-210, which authorized the C.A.O. to execute a cooperation agreement between the city and the Economic Development Authority to facilitate the construction of facilities that will house the operation of Stone Brewing Company for the purpose of adding certain restrictions for the use of revenues derived from development. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page 1, line 19, after the word, after the inserted word "as," strike the inserted word "further." Page 2, line 2, after the inserted word "as," strike the inserted word "further." I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper as read and to continue it to the special meeting on February 2 at 5:00 P.M. Councilman Samuels, will you make that motion?
Yes, Madam Clerk, so moved.
Councilman Bilalz, will you second that? Council is voting on the motion to accept the proposed amendment to ordinance number 2014-254 as presented and to continue that paper to the Monday, February 2 Special Meeting at 5:00 P.M. Mr. Bilalz.
Aye.
Ms. Graziano.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels.
Aye.
Mr. Agulhasco.
Aye.
Ms. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Trammell.
Aye.
Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert.
Aye.
President Mosby.
Aye.
That motion is passed. That paper will be before you again next Monday at the special meeting at 5:00 P.M. Okay. You can bear with me just a moment. There was a moment when a paper was on the consent agenda, and we asked for comments in favor or against, and at that time, I think they missed it, didn't know that there was an opportunity if we could allow them to have a moment to speak in favor of the paper. Paper number 2015-2, what is the will of the council? Can I get some head nods? We're okay?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, specifically, I believe there were a number of folks here who were interested in speaking in favor of the renaming of the Manchester Courthouse after Senator Marsh, who was with us this evening.
Okay, if they could step forward, please, and line up for me, please, so we'll know just how many.
Is it just that or anything on the consent agenda?
No, it's just for that paper.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Orrell. I'm a lawyer and been here in Richmond for many years, since '89. I've known Henry Marsh for many, many years, and I think there's nothing finer that this righteous council could do than name the courthouse after Henry Marsh and his brother, whose family has served this community for many decades, both admirably and honorably. I would field any questions in regards to my knowledge of the senator, the commissioner, and the mayor. And I think that I would point out that although Mayor Wilder was elected mayor of Richmond, Henry was the first mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mo Carnage, and I'm an anarchist, and I'd like to speak in favor of the paper to name the courthouse after Senator Marsh because I think it's great that city council is creating this precedent of violating its own procedures over and over again, and we can totally use that to our advantage in the future. So, go on, break your own rules, make them mean nothing. And I also think it's great because Richmond has a super great history of looking like a ding dong in the newspaper and looking just completely stupid. So, I think any opportunity we have to open ourselves up to future scandals is fabulous. Let's name things after people who are still alive, who can still mess up, you know, and still have scandals that can make us all look really stupid. So, go on, do it. It's great. We're going to use it against you later.
My name is Nadine Marsh Carter, and I'd like to speak on behalf of the resolution. I just want to say that as Senator Marsh's daughter, the family genuinely appreciates the gesture and the recognition of both Henry Marsh and Harold Marsh for two simple reasons. They are men of commitment, men who have given their lives to service, men who have given their lives to upholding the law, and who believe in the value of this city and love this city and have lived their lives as examples of that. And so, it's my hope that in this way, we can motivate more young children, children from this area who've come from humble beginnings, children of color, children who may not think that they have hope, to dream, to work hard, to strive to do their very best. And so, I thank you humbly for this recognition, and we appreciate this opportunity to send the message that, yes, you can serve and make a difference no matter what starts you have. The sky's the limit in this city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Peter Dunneville, and I want to speak in support of the paper. I've known Senator Marsh, geez, for about 25 years, and I knew Harold Marsh, and they're both good men who, for the benefit of the community, they forestalled a lot of conveniences and a lot of, they sacrificed a lot. Senator Marsh, I don't know if anyone here knows, but he's responsible for desegregating most schools in Virginia. He did it county by county, courthouse by courthouse. I can't think of a better place and a better way to honor those two men than to put them on the Manchester Courthouse, also because Harold Marsh, who served this community really greatly, also deserves to be honored. He was one of the first black UVA graduates from their engineering school, and both these men are exemplary. And following Ms. Carter, they provide positive role models of what people need to aspire to. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to everyone for, if we have any more, if you could line up for me.
Good evening. My name is Donna Tucker, and I am in favor of naming, renaming the courthouse after Senator Marsh and Harold Marsh. I began my first law firm job with them years ago. I'm not going to say how many years, but years ago, and I can't imagine where my life would be right now with the education, the knowledge that they taught me. They both, they took us under, not just me, but a lot of our coworkers, they took us under their wing to teach us not just about law, but they took the time to teach us about being, you know, in humanity. They taught us how to be respectful within our community. They taught us civil rights. They taught us everything that we needed to know to appreciate where we were and where we're going. So, I think that it is commendable that we had the opportunity to name a courthouse after them. They have both well deserved it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Michael Jackson. I'm here to stand in support of the paper for the renaming of Manchester Courthouse for Senator Marsh and Harold Marsh. I'm going to not be before you very long, and my story's a little bit more personal. Senator Marsh shares the same birthday as my daughter, and I am getting ready to head to Newport News to celebrate my grandmother's 99th birthday. And she's considerably a little bit older than Senator Marsh, but I believe that, as Mayor Jones had said before, he's a pioneer for the city of Richmond, for the state of Virginia, and for America. It's most important for me to take my children, that are 10 and 11 years old, to see their grandmother because their stories that they're going to hear from their grandparents are much different than what I heard sitting on my grandmother's lap. My son met Senator Marsh about three years ago at an event. And more importantly than me having my picture taken with Senator Marsh was my son actually having his picture taken with him. As both my children, just this past Monday, or last Monday, a week from today, actually, learned of the Moton Museum in Farmville, Virginia, they have a living legacy to go to and to talk with. And I could find no more fitting recognition than to change the name of Manchester Court to Senator Marsh and Harold Marsh. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Chuck Richardson, and I'm a citizen of the city, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to praise my colleague. I think it's somewhat ironic that I get a chance to speak on this matter. I think it's somewhat odd that you all didn't name the Court's Building after me. After I spent more time in the Court's Building than most of these lawyers. Someone said they were going to name the jail after me, but that's the honor I could go without. I just want to say that you know Henry Marsh and his public side. You know most of your elected officials' public side. But during the 1977 period, few of you will ever know what the elected officials who were the first blacks to take seat went through. And you saw us on the television, and you saw Henry Marsh take the lead. You read his quotes in the newspapers. But for those of us who were close to Henry, only a few of us know what it took for him to endure. And sometimes he had to do it alone. He had no leaders. He had no one whose footsteps he had to follow to tell him what to do because he was treading unpaved ground. I was young, didn't know left from right. I had to listen to everything he said, and most of us did. And the weight of the world was on his shoulders when he was the first black to pave this road. The weight was heavy, and I could see it and I could feel it. And few of us knew every decision he had to make, and I'll tell you one story and I'll stop. When we dismissed Bill Laiger as the manager, I guess that Henry was $300 billion worth of men at the 8th and Main Street Building. The richest white men in Richmond all came together and said, you come down here and we're going to tell you what to do. They were going to tell Henry and the rest of us that you were elected, but we run this city, and we've got enough money to tell you colored fellows that you're not going to fire this man. All of us were scared. So many white men with so much money telling so few little broke black boys what we were going to do. And I was so proud and so scared when Henry Marsh stood up. I got, I'm going to cut off at 1 minute, I got 30 seconds. This is history. This is massive resistance in one room. Henry Marsh stood up and said, we will let you know what we're going to do with Bill Laiger when we tell the rest of the citizens what we're going to do. They could have taken Henry out and strung him up, but Henry, it took courage for him to do that. And he faced many a moments like that. I want to let you know, Henry, that I didn't always agree with you, and you know it. We had a lot of fights, but I was always proud of you, and you deserved this. Thank you all.
Madam President, could we ask Senator Marsh to say a few words?
Sure. Sure.
My name is Henry Marsh, and I'm a citizen of Richmond. I had not intended to speak, but I can't let Chuck get away with putting all that on me. I was one member of five who provided leadership to the council, and everything I did, it was in concert with what the other members wanted to do. I don't deserve the credit. This tribute is important, primarily because of my family. They suffered financially and otherwise, because I was involved in trying to help people. But it wasn't just me for the courthouse. Oliver Hill, Sam Tucker, W. Lester Banks, L. Francis Griffin, and numerous white citizens of Virginia paid a price, because they supported the civil rights effort. They were hauled before the General Assembly, questioned, and persecuted by a committee of the legislature. And there were a lot of heroic people who stood by us and supported us. When I ran for office in a polarized environment, I always got about 40% of the white vote. There were a lot of people who contributed and sacrificed to make our leadership responsible. George Little, my attorney, was vilified because he represented us. And he had resigned from a bank board because they talked about the council so bad. T. Justin Moore, who was the head of Virginia Power, called me down one day and said, "Henry, we've got to do something. The city is frozen. We've got to do something to get off of dead center." And we agreed to do Richmond Renaissance, which was a shadow government in a sense that people couldn't have gotten elected, but we shared the power with them to break the ice. It was 50/50. For every black citizen on the board, there was a white citizen, and we kept it even-steven. And Richmond Renaissance, with Justin Moore's leadership and the business community leadership, supported us, and we provided some leadership to the city. So, I can't sit here and claim to be a savior. I was one person representing a group of people. Chuck Richardson was a feisty member of the group, but he provided excellent leadership for his community and good ideas for the city. Willie Dell was tremendous. Walter Kenny was a lion. He was a champion, and he was a strong supporter. And all the members, Claudia McDaniel, she did something that no one has done before since. She had races through her district. We ran through every nook and crook of the district, and she got people involved in a tremendous way. So, we had a good team, and maybe I was the leader, but I didn't do it by myself. I did it for a whole lot of people. And I think the current leadership is doing things to help the city, and we just have to keep on doing what we're doing, because Richmond is the greatest city, I think, in the world. And we have the best people in the world, and we need to keep providing leadership for the rest of the world. Thank you.
Well, Madam Clerk, after that, you're charged with expedited papers for consideration this evening.
Madam President, we-
May I be heard?
Yeah.
My name is Clarence Dunneville, and I practiced law with Henry and Harold for many years. And I'm here tonight in support of what you're doing. I really am proud that the city of Richmond is recognizing these two great heroes of the civil rights movement. And I would just like to say that I brought a few people from Hill, Tucker, and Marsh down here, and can you stand? I've got a few of them. They're still around. All right. But I really am proud of what you're doing. And I don't live in the city of Richmond, but I still am living here spiritually. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, are there papers for expedited consideration this evening?
Yes, Madam President, there is one for consideration, and that's Resolution Number 2015-R-5, and that's to oppose any effort by the General Assembly of Virginia to enact legislation limiting the amount or type of fees set forth by the commission or by other public-use airports in the 2015 session of the General Assembly of Virginia, including but not necessarily limited to House Bill Number 1889. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of that paper as read. Councilwoman Samuels, will you make that motion?
Zoom move, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Graziano, will you second that?
Second.
Council is voting on the motion for expedited consideration of Resolution Number 2015-R-5. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That paper is before you for consideration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, let's move on to the approval of the minutes.
Madam President?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Samuels, do you have information on the paper?
Yes, ma'am. This is a paper brought to you by me, the appointee to the Airport Commission. And this is something that we noticed was going to come up in the General Assembly. There's a House bill that would ask to relieve certain folks or to prohibit the airport from being able to charge fees to businesses that are technically off the property of the airport, but sole purpose is to make profit from the location of the airport. And as you know, the airport lives under its own rules and regulations as a separate government entity. Due to federal laws, it's not allowed to receive any state, federal, or local, excuse me, state or local monies, and under federal laws, it must operate as self-sustaining as possible. Unfortunately, in 2001, an entity built a business just outside of the airport that is specifically operating as an off-parking lot and shuttle service transporting passengers to and from the airport. The business model depends almost entirely on the existence of the airport, the roads it builds and maintains, its security and administrative operations, and the airport's efforts to retain and develop commercial air service. The flow of travelers who uses the airport's facilities creates the entire pool of potential customers for the business. In 2005, the Airport Commission adopted a resolution setting a standard airport access fee based on gross revenue. And this is fairly similar throughout airports in the state and nation. And it's about 8% of the gross revenue for off-airport parking, off-airport pet boarding, car rental, et cetera. At 8%, Richmond is the lowest existing or planned of the five major regional airports that surround us. The Supreme Court of the United States and the Supreme Court of Virginia have both declared such user fees to be legal and appropriate, and have determined such user fees being imposed in these situations are not taxes, but are actual usage fees. Although this has been challenged multiple times, it has never withstood scrutiny, the challenges have never withstood scrutiny, and the airport has always come up on the right side of the law. And this goes nationwide. Now, we're seeing that since the courts have decided it's constitutional, the goal is to change the law. And what would happen this year is, to give you an idea, the business has operated a profitable business for over 10 years. It had its best year ever in 2013, when its gross income totaled nearly $1.5 million. This income is generated from their operations that would not be possible without the customer base generated by the airport itself. And to give you an idea, in 2003, that same business agreed to a standard airport access fee based on about 8% of its gross revenue per our regulations, which resulted in a fee of $118,000 for the year. The fee does not cover that business's proportionate share of the airport's cost for building, maintaining, and repairing its roads, or providing security, lighting, signage, et cetera, which is actually closer to $154,000 a year. This business actually charges its customers an 8% airport access fee on top of its own parking charges, thereby passing the airport access fee directly on to its customers. This legislation wouldn't just have a negative impact on the central Virginia airport, but it would in fact have an impact on all Virginia airports, which are similarly situated now or in the future. It would reduce their ability to successfully compete for air carrier service against airports from across the nation, which are able to generate a fair share of off-airport parking revenue. In other words, as we are looking to build our reputation as a world-class city, a tier-one city, this bill could have a deleterious effect on that. So, this resolution is asking City Council to join with Hanover, Chesterfield, Henrico, and the Central Virginia Airport Commission, Central Richmond, Central Region Airport Commission, to encourage the General Assembly to not act favorably on this House bill.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. We will now have a public hearing on the paper. Are there any persons that wish to speak in opposition of the paper?
Greetings to the body of the people. I'm a man. I'm one of the people, one of your bosses. You're the servants of the people. And I'm also called, as you stated before, Chris Dorsey. So, I heard Charles mention courts calling legislation or activities constitutional in regard to this document, and I will say, there's absolutely nothing constitutional about anything that this body does. And first of all, the airport is in Henrico County, and this is Richmond City Council, so it's really not under the purview of the Richmond City Council. But anyways, you are, the president of council has already been out of order multiple times during this meeting. So, I don't think that this, you know, is an issue that is of importance to anyone except for folks involved in parking schemes. And unfortunately, one of the few things that I've learned from watching this body very closely over the years is that one of y'all's biggest rackets is parking schemes and extorting people through parking. So, I'm not really interested in any more of your parking extortion, but I will say that I require compensation for the crimes that have been carried out against me inside this chamber by government officials alleged to be the servants of the people. And I do not appreciate public officials who do not comprehend or understand the law. And I urge you all to read Robert's Rules of Order, because obviously, none of you have read it, and none of you have read the Constitution, and y'all are all criminals, and I do require compensation, and I require the law to be upheld.
Good evening. My name's Silver Persinger. I'm a citizen of Richmond, Virginia. This is an expedited paper. That means it hasn't gone through committee. The only, the first public hearing of the paper was Mr. Samuels' explanation. I was trying to follow along, but I'm sorry I didn't follow along, and I haven't had time to look into it more. So, I'm posing it on those grounds. But if you all are in the business of recommending legislation to the General Assembly, as a citizen, I would like you all to express the city's support for Senate Bill 686 to decriminalize marijuana and allow the growth of six plants on your property. This is something that's happening in other states. This is a paper that was only introduced two weeks ago. So, you know, when you guys were developing your packet in November, this wasn't even on the radar, but lots of other states are doing this.
Mr. Persinger?
Yes, ma'am.
And I hear you when you say, "We need citizen input on legislation." I hear you. But that's not what this paper is about. I need-
Well, this paper is about legislation that you're recommending to the General Assembly, and I would much more prefer you to recommend decriminalizing marijuana than supporting a parking scheme for the airport. Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the paper? Counsel for discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Robertson?
I'd like to ask the patron, is this paper being expedited because of a timeliness as it relates to it coming up in the General Assembly to be entertained, or, and also whether or not we've had any conference with our advisor?
Yes to both questions.
Okay. And his recommendation is-
To get this thing over so he can tell folks that the, everyone that makes up the Central Rich, Central Region Airport Commission is opposed to this. We stand as a body. We stand as a region.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Agulasto?
Thank you, Madam President. And I appreciate the patron, Mr. Samuels, for bringing a resolution before us that we can consider this as a body, because I do think, as we talk with our partners over the General Assembly, that it's important that the City Council have a public hearing, have of the public dialogue, where we can then express the support or opposition of particular legislation. And I think that this is done well. I will just say, however, I wish that we had followed a very similar process when it comes to the House Bill 2253, which deals with Richmond Public Schools and creating a trust fund and an advisory that's going to look at facilities set up by the General Assembly. I think that we have not, as council, had that opportunity to discuss it in a public body similar to this resolution. And just ask that, in the future, when legislation deals with the city of Richmond, that this body deliberated and put forth a recommendation through a public format. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the question.
Council is voting on Resolution Number 2015-R-5. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Agulasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to the approval of, I'm sorry, Ms. Robertson?
Madam President, I missed the first, no appointments for boards and commissions. I do have one paper that I would like for the body to entertain this afternoon, of an appointment for the boards and commissions.
Okay.
Does the clerk have this information? Okay, I would just, whatever the timing is that we can entertain this. I just don't want us to miss it.
Okay.
Can you do it now? Okay. Madam Chair, we have, I'd like to offer a motion to appoint Glenn Hudson to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Oversight Board. We have one resignation from a representative that was a member of the board, and we need to replace this. This has not gone through committee, but we need to do a replacement on this board. We're in the process of trying to move forward with making awards. The application process has been completed. And so, I'd like to put a motion on the table to appoint Glenn Hudson to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Oversight Board.
Madam President?
Yes.
The, as you know, the motions for appointment can be done now, but for that particular appointment, we will need a motion to suspend the rules so that that application does not go to a committee, because it has not gone to a committee. So, if appointment will be done today, for Mr. Hudson, we will need a motion to suspend the rules to bypass the committee for that particular appointment.
So, will you be able to call for a motion?
Um, yes.
Madam President, I'd like to offer a motion to suspend the rules to make this appointment.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Madam.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules to allow the appointment of Glenn Hudson to the Affordable Housing Oversight Board. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
The motion has passed. And since the motion has passed, is it now the will of council to move forward with appointing Glenn Hudson to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Oversight Board?
Do we need a second for that, Madam Clerk?
The motion, you don't.
Is it that? We're going back to the first motion from Ms. Robertson, and do we need a second?
No, this is, the motion to suspend the rules?
Okay.
Has been done, but now we're discussing the will of council to move forward with appointing Glenn Hudson to the Affordable Housing Oversight Board.
Madam President.
Okay, do you need to ask a question to do that, Madam Clerk?
Um, yes, or if someone would like to just make the motion and second it?
So move, Madam Clerk.
If it's the...
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Madam President, I just have one quick question for discussion. This is because the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is going to meet before it could get through committee and back to council again, is that correct?
That's right, and we need a quorum. The meeting is Wednesday night.
Thanks.
All right, back to the question.
Madam President.
Mr. Agulhaso.
Just one point of clarification that I would ask, and I don't know if the city attorney needs to comment on this, but I know that our boards and commissions are for residents of the city and/or folks who work in the city, and this individual does not live in the city, but his business address is listed as a P.O. box. How do we certify that somebody works in the city when there's no physical address but a P.O. box?
You would need at least some information, perhaps from the appointments clerk, who could provide the missing information.
City Attorney, so it's my understanding that a P.O. box would not certify that somebody is actually in fact working in the city?
No, sir, not necessarily.
Thank you. I'd like for, when we have applications in the future, that we verify this information before it gets to this stage, because I don't feel comfortable certifying somebody who has a P.O. box. Thank you.
Well noted. Ms. Robertson?
And that was brought to my attention earlier by the clerk, and my, this, Mr. Hudson actually works for the city, and so it's whether or not they work in the city or whether or not they live in the city. So the address would be, I guess, the city, which is City Hall, is what I was told that the address was passed on to the clerk's office, but I don't see Mr. Alexander here.
So are we saying that the?
He's an employee of the city.
Employee of the city.
Yes.
So then that, at that point says that he would, he would work for the board, Mr. Agulhaso?
I guess so. I mean, it just raises even more questions, because if he's an employee of the city, and then he's also listed as working at two other places of employment right now, it just, there seems to be a lot of questions. But I will abstain from the vote if it's the will of council to move this forward.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
It is, I'm sorry, Madam President.
Vice Presidents.
Thank you. Mr. Agulhaso here, it's indicating on the information that was given to us that he's a contractor, or a consultant for the other organizations, so I don't want to let that lay out there without pointing that out. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Counsel is voting on the motion to appoint Glenn Hudson to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Oversight Board, which has been seconded. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Agulhaso?
Abstained.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
The motion has passed. Mr. Hudson will receive information, appointing him to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Oversight Board.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. The minutes to be approved are from the January 5th Special Organizational Meeting, January 5th Special Counsel Meeting, January 12th Inform and Form of Meetings. I need a motion to approve those minutes. Councilmember Bilalz, will you make that motion?
No.
Councilwoman Graziano, will you second? Counsel is now voting on Councilmember Bilalz's motion. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Agulhaso?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Thank you, those minutes have been approved. Thank you. Let's move on to the reports and announcements.
Now, citizen comments?
It's after. That's what I said earlier.
Okay, good enough.
You want me to go back and repeat it to you, what I said?
Oh, wow. Wow.
Is everybody clear? Okay. Anybody ready to do their announcements?
I'm ready.
Okay, Ms. Robertson?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate counsel's support. The Oversight Board for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund will be held this week, January the 28th, at 6:00 to 7:30 here at City Hall on the third floor. We're in the process of moving forward, we hope with making some awards out of that fund so we can begin the process of building more affordable housing in the city of Richmond. Likewise, the Citizens for Alternative to Incarceration Board will be meeting this week as well, here at City Hall, tomorrow night, January the 27th, at 6:30 on the third The Sixth District January meeting will be held at the Redskins, Washington Redskins Football Training Camp on Saturday at 12:30 until 2:00. And that meeting will focus on public safety in the city and the citizens' roles and responsibility versus those of the police department. We will also have special guests, will include Mr. Rufus Fleming to share with the community the alternatives to incarceration, and there will be other vendors that will be there to provide services to assist those that may need assistance with drug rehab and other services that the city is providing to address some of our leading causes that contributes to crime in the city of Richmond. And Madam President, I'm sure that this may also be on the agenda of others as well, but I want to announce that the Mayor Jones is having his State of the City address this week, Thursday night, January the 29th, at 6:30 at Hugueny High School, which is our new high school for the city of Richmond in the Grand Fourth District. And so we want all of the citizens of Richmond to come out. If you haven't seen the school, it's worth coming to see the school, but more importantly, we look forward to the message from our mayor. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I'd like to proceed with announcements for the district. There will be a meeting tomorrow evening, Churchill North Neighborhood Transformation Public Meeting, Tuesday, January 27th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Woodville Elementary School, 2000 North 28th Street. The meeting will include discussions of the update and process relative to the transformation of the Creighton community, next steps towards implementation, and the Armstrong High School Memorial. Again, Churchill North Neighborhood Transformation Public Meeting tomorrow evening, Tuesday, January 27th, 6:00 p.m., Woodville Elementary School. The first meeting of the Seventh District East End Community will take place on Wednesday, January 28th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Richmond East District Initiative Governance Service Center located at 701 North 25th Street. Will be an opportunity to discuss partnerships for a safer community with our public safety professional staff. The guest speakers and those involved will include Chief Tarasowick, Chief Creasy with Fire, Mr. Anthony Clean with the Emergency Management Services, as well as representation from Richmond Code Enforcement, and also an opportunity for Public Works to share the new curbside value partnership. So again, first meeting, Seventh District East End Community, Wednesday, January 28th, 6:00 p.m., 701 North 25th Street, the East District Center. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow night at 6:00, Stratfordshire Civic Association will hold its annual meeting at the Bonner Library, and at 7:00 tonight, I will have my district meeting at the brand-new, terrific, state-of-the-art Hugueny High School.
You said tonight?
7:00 tomorrow night. Did I say tonight?
Yes.
I'm late. Anyway.
You're late.
I'm late. And so I'm hoping that a lot of people will come, the whole meeting's going to be a tour of the new school, so that should be really exciting. So thanks.
Mr. Bilalz?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one announcement, tomorrow night, we will also be having a First District Town Hall meeting at Albert Hill Middle School, 3400 Patterson Avenue, at 6:00. Special guest will be Dr. Dana Bedden, Superintendent Richmond Public Schools. However, I would remind people that if we do get snow tonight and schools are closed tomorrow, we will have to reschedule the meeting, because school policy is that if schools are closed, all activities are closed. So check in the morning. If it does not snow too much, then we'll have the meeting tomorrow night. Thank you.
And Madam President, we're in the same boat. If it snows and the school's closed, we're not going to be able to have it.
Great. Mr. Agulhaso?
Thank you, and I apologize in advance for the lengthy announcements, but we've got some pretty important stuff going on in the district, and I want to make sure folks are aware of it. Tomorrow evening, on the 27th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Williamburg Community House, the Oregon Hill Neighborhood Association will meet, and they will have representatives from the city planning department, as well as Venture Richmond there, to discuss rezoning of Trediger Green. And preliminarily, we think that that's going to end up being discussed at 15 days of special events at Trediger Green with other considerations. So I encourage those who have voiced concern about that in the past to please come out to the Williamburg Community House in Oregon Hill at 7:00 p.m. for that neighborhood discussion. On Monday, February the 2nd, the Hull Street Melothean Civic Association will be meeting at 7:00 p.m., and they will hold their meeting at Conanea Christian Church at 3600 McRan Street. Tuesday, February the 3rd, is another important discussion with city staff at the Uptown Association regarding urban business zoning and parking overlay districts that go in the uptown neighborhood between essentially Belvedere and Boulevard, along West Carey and West Main Streets. And this is to amend and update ordinances that were originally passed in 2007 that deal with the requirement for businesses to have on and off-street parking. So that meeting is at 6:00 p.m., Uptown Association, and they will be meeting in the space upstairs from the Pearl Raw Bar. On Wednesday, February the 4th, I'll be hosting our Fifth District meeting. This is going to be hosted at the Roundhouse in Byrd Park, and we have several presentations. The meeting will begin at 6:30 p.m., and many people have been asking about the new recycling program. We will have Darlene Mallory from the Department of Public Works there to answer your questions and help provide additional information regarding the new recycling supercans that have been delivered. We'll also have Gay Stokes from the Stormwater Utility to talk about different initiatives, and we'll be in Byrd Park where there is currently some renovations being done on the stormwater management system. Then we'll have a presentation from Thad Williamson, who is leading the community wealth-building program here, that's the Anti-Poverty Initiative, and I welcome Thad to discuss the program and how we are essentially implementing a poverty reduction strategy. And then lastly, we will talk about the city's upcoming budget and initiatives that the district would like to see. We will be entering a biennium budget, which the mayor will be introducing before March the 6th, and I want to make sure that the district needs are well represented in those conversations. So that meeting is, again, this, next Wednesday, February the 4th, at 6:30 p.m. in the Round House. Then on February the 10th, at 6:30 p.m., the Swansboro West Civic Association will be meeting at the St. Francis Home, and their address is 65 West Clopton Street. And then lastly, on Tuesday, February the 17th, the Maymont Foundation will be holding a community discussion with immediate neighborhoods to review the master plan that the Maymont Foundation has for its facilities and how it anticipates rolling out improvements as a result of its $35 million capital campaign, which they are halfway through raising those necessary funds. So neighbors in Maymont and in Byrd Park and the Caroland and Williamburg Terrace are invited to that. It's going to be at the Robins Nature Center, and look for more information from us on details for that meeting. And then lastly, I haven't done this, but I feel kind of compelled to do it. At the end of every council meeting, we read introduction of papers, and I don't expect that the public will still be here at that point, because that becomes very tedious. But I just want to mention that there are several papers that I am patroning that are being introduced tonight that will go through public hearing, and I want to make sure that the citizens are aware of it, so if they wanted to voice support or opposition. One of which is installing all-way traffic stops at the intersection of South Shepherd Street and Maplewood Avenue, and this is adjacent to John B. Carey Elementary School, and it's in Byrd Park, where the Little League fields are and the tennis courts. And we have had numerous concerns about the speed and the accidents and general pedestrian and children's safety in that area. So that is something that will be coming out to council. And then, as a result of several requests, Councilmember Bilalz and I are seeking the administration to pursue a lease on the GRTC bus barn in the uptown neighborhood. While they have no current use for it, there are still as many uses that the city could benefit from, mainly providing parking and giving some relief to the area businesses and neighbors, while also making the site available to enjoy some of the public art that is out there. And lastly, updating the notification to city council members when there is a building permit issued or requested for land that is identified in the master plan for acquisition. We had an issue in the Oregon Hill neighborhood where a portion of what we thought would be acquired for a public park ended up with a building permit, and the state code changed so that we were no longer required to be notified. And I do think that it's in our interest to work with our master plan on acquiring land, and if these are going to happen in the future, we should all be aware of it. So thank you for my announcements.
Thank you. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow night, 5:00, we will have our public safety meeting, and that will be here. And on the agenda, we will be talking about towing regulations on private lots, about how these vehicles are being towed off of these private lots. Also, we're going to talk about when there's bad weather, how is the city employees notified? Because sometimes they do not get notified, and they show up at work, so we're going to be speaking about that. And also, we're going to talk about body cameras for the police officers. That's body cameras for police officers, and also the methods of use of force. And everyone is invited to attend, and that is tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. right here in the council chambers. And also, we're going to talk about the board and vacancies, too. Our Eighth District does not have another meeting until the 3rd Thursday in April. We take the few months off, so we will be coming back. I believe it's April the 16th, at 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the satellite. But that doesn't mean that I do not attend the other civic association meetings, because I do attend them. Also, I know that I've had a few phone calls about why we keep continuing the speeding over there on McGuire and Hopkins Road and Chapel Drive. That is because we were not able to have a meeting. I want to have a meeting with the citizens, and also... I want to have a meeting with the citizens and also with the city administration, which they have been working very hard to try to pick a date so that the citizens can come out and find out what the solution is, or what do we do to fix the speeding over there. And also, I'm getting a lot of calls, and I appreciate the police that attended my last meeting in December where the citizens were speaking about there is so much speeding over there on Hopkins Road, and also on Terminal Avenue, which we just had another accident where there was children involved on a school bus. So, that's some other things that we definitely got to address about how much there is speeding all over the city of Richmond, not just in the Eighth District. Also, my heart goes out to the business owners, I mean, to the business owner over there at the subway on Commerce Road where they were robbed the other night, and they were placed in a freezer. Thank God that they were not killed or injured. But anyway, I do know that the police are working on some things, and they got some good leads, and pray that pretty soon there will be an arrest in that. This right here is your smoke alarm. It's free. It's about the only thing that's free in the city of Richmond. If you call 646-1526, the firefighters, not the police officers, but the firefighters will come to your home, and they will install this for free. It doesn't cost anything. And if it needs a battery, they'll put the battery in the smoke alarm for free. They will come to your business, they'll come to your church, they'll come to your apartment. All you got to do is just call them, make that appointment. And if you don't want to call them, you can stop by the nearest fire station in your neighborhood and tell them that you want them to come there and check your smoke alarm. Because everyone knows that these smoke alarms, they will save your life, they will save your pet, and they will even save your house. But it must be working in order for it to work. So, please, please, give them a call, 646-1526, because they would love to come out and help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamel. Mr. Samuels?
Thank you very much. Tomorrow night's a busy night in the Second District. On January 27th, the Robinson Street Association will be meeting at 5:30 PM at Retreat Hospital located at 110 North Robinson Street. Also, on Tuesday, January 27th, the Carvik Area Civic Improvement League will be meeting at 7:00 PM at VCU's Carver Community Center, and that's located at 1103 Marshall Street. On Monday, February 2nd, the Fan District Association will be holding their regularly-scheduled board meeting at 7:00 PM at the FDA Building located at 208 Strawberry Street. And on Wednesday, February 4th, the Scotts Edition Civic Association will be meeting at 8:30 AM at Riverside Pace McTavish, and that's located at 1300 McTavish Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Hilbert?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to remind everyone that the guidelines for tax relief for the elderly and the disabled are now available. The basic guidelines are that if you are 65 or older or disabled, own and live in your dwelling, earn less than $50,000 a year, and have less than $200,000 in assets, and that is excluding the value or the equity in your home, you are eligible for this program. The deadline is March 31. Need any information, additional information, or an application, you can call my office at 646-6055. The district meeting for the month of January will be held this Wednesday, January 28th at Partnership for Families North Side located at 800 West Graham Road. If you're approaching this building from Chamberlain Avenue, it's my advice that you go to Overbrook and take your first right on Taswell and come down and turn on Graham Road. Unfortunately, West Graham Road is a one-way street going in the opposite direction from Chamberlain Avenue. If you have any questions, again, call 646-6055 on the best route to get to this building. They are an excellent partner, leading in early childhood education and adult education for the north side. They're in a lead gold building, so they really have done a lot for the community. So, I hope everyone will come out to hear about the public safety update from the police and budget basics as we have the upcoming budget process. And finally, the meetings are held from 6:00 to 8:00. That's 6 o'clock, and please come out and join us for those meetings. Also, if you'd like to be added to the district email list or to receive these announcements that come out at least once a week, please email lisa.towns@lisa.towns, excuse me, lisa.towns, T-O-W-N-E-S, at richmondgov.com, or you can call her, again, using the number that I gave earlier, 646-6055. If you're contacting me via email, please use my city email address, which is chris.hilbert@richmondgov.com. Thank you very much, Madam President.
You're welcome. I'd like to first thank M. Stanley Ryan Unit of Parliamentarians. They will be handling a free training for council, so I just wanted to thank them for being here today. Wave your hand so they know who you are. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you. Please be reminded that the next regular scheduled Ninth District meeting will be February 19th, and that will be at the Goodwill at 6301 Midlothian Turnpike. The February CTE meeting is scheduled for February 12th. The February Midlothian Team meeting chaired by Al Moore will be held on February 10th, and that's at the Social Services Building on Hull Street. Please take note that we are in the midst of the inclement weather. The cold weather overflow may be an option when it's cold, and from my understanding, it's open January 27th and 28th. The location is the Public Safety Building at 505 North Ninth Street. The hours of operation are from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and registration time is from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Single adults needing overnight shelter are asked to report to Commonwealth Catholic Charities Homeless Point of Entry during operational hours for a comprehensive intake and referral to the appropriate shelter. For individuals who are not eligible for existing shelter, or if all available beds have been filled, Homeless Point of Entry will provide a referral to the Cold Weather Overflow Shelter. Individuals seeking access to the Overflow Shelter must have a referral. Let us all be mindful of African-American history. We in Virginia, in Richmond in particular, have a rich history. Let us all take the time to both appreciate it and learn from it so that we can truly move forward. Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it. George Satiana. As always, I'm concerned about the Ninth District. Please continue to contact me with any ideas, thoughts, or concerns. My email address is michelle.moseby@richmondgov.com. I can be reached at 804-646-2779, or 804-912-6465. Madam Clerk, please call the list of citizen committee pure speakers.
First speaker is Jamil Jacey. Jamil Jacey. Next speaker is Charles Willis.
Good afternoon, everyone. Madam President, Vice President-elect of City Council. Pretty much wrote everything down because I wanted to make sure I stick strictly to what my comments was, but you noticed the, just a moment ago, there was a number of folks that exited council chamber. Those folks were part of the folks that were very concerned and part of the Black Lives Matter protesters.
I need you to state your name, please.
Charles, oh, I'm sorry. Charles Willis.
Thank you.
Executive Director of Citizens Against Crime. So, I'm closing my notes, and I'm going to be very brief. Throughout the several weeks, you all have noticed a number of protests. I support freedom of speech. Citizens Against Crime supports the freedom of speech, freedom of right, the freedom to exercise your constitutional rights. What we don't support is because of your freedom and rights that you infringe on the rights and peace of others. That's unlawful. As we went throughout the weeks of engaging in marches and protest, we were able to identify some of the concerns of some of the leaders. One of them, Madam Secretary Clerk, called the name, that was part of the group that exited. I want to thank the continued assistance of Major Drew from the Richmond Police Department and his efforts of reaching out to those protesters as we attended a march last week at Monroe Park. Major Drew extended an opportunity to meet, to voice their concerns in a more setting that's appropriate so that we can direct each and every one to the purpose for a protest. One of the things I said to one of the individuals tonight was that I'm not going to stand before council and ask them to make me a white man. I'm black. It is what it is. So, as we march in protest about Black Lives Matters, then when we come up before council, let's make sure we address council to ask them for things that we know they can do, and not ask them to do things to have to deal with Ferguson, or New York, or other cities. Richmond is Richmond. We don't have police brutality here. We don't do that. We have a process in place. It's called eternal affairs. We have folks like Major Drew and Chief Teresovik and others, Sowick and others. We have a city council. We have a public safety meeting. We have so many opportunities where citizens can come and voice their concerns and get it straight. So, the exit that you saw of the group just now, those group of folks that were here to exercise their right to protest, accepted the challenge to meet, and we look forward to the meeting. I assured them that there were council members that would be glad to meet with them, and they accepted that challenge, and it's just a happy day for me to see folks that want to engage in the proper process here in our city of Richmond. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Montague McGruder.
Good evening. I'm Montague McGruder. Last week, the General Assembly introduced two bills that basically have the exact same language that could put the future of the Richmond Public School System in jeopardy. Those bills are House Bill 2253 and its companion bill, Senate Bill 1370. Both bills would establish the Richmond City Public Schools' learning excellence by aligning Public Schools Commission. Both bills were crafted by the city administration according to the times of dispatch in an attempt to shield council and the mayor from making decisions that were considered, quote, "politically dangerous." Both bills would allow for this commission to sell surplus property for economic development purposes, and given the recent round of economic development that has come down the pike over the past year, we can kind of already figure out what economic development means. They also, the bills would also strip power from our duly-elected school board that is already in the process of improving the school system using their Facilities Task Force. The support of this council, and the fact that this city administration crafted it and has put it before the General Assembly is a vote of no confidence on the school board that has been duly-elected by the people. It is also a blatant smack in the face to every parent, teacher, and student that has a stake in the Richmond Public School System. I call upon this council and the mayor to oppose both bills and to have them pulled from consideration by the General Assembly. The people will not forget the actions of this council and the mayor, and this will very well end y'all's political careers in 2016.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms.?
I just, the bill is two pages long. It's just front and back of one paper. I encourage folks to read it and not rely on hysteria before coming to a decision about whether or not to support it. There is some information out there that doesn't appear to be accurate, and Mr. McGruder, I hope if you want, be happy to sit down with you and go over things so you can feel more comfortable with what's actually being discussed instead of what you've heard.
I've read the actual text of the bill.
Then I'm sorry you got it wrong. Madam Clerk? Madam President?
Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be, I'm more than welcome to sit down with you.
Madam Clerk, please read the introductory papers for this evening.
Madam President, introduction for these papers for this evening are as follows. Ordinance Number 2015-15 to rezone 2102 East Main Street from NY Light Industrial to B5C Central Business. Planning Commission February 17th at 1:30. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-16 to amend the special use of 1125 West Clay Street to permit an additional 33 dwelling units. Planning Commission February 17th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-17 to authorize the special use of 1617 Grove Avenue and 120 North Lombardi Street for a multifamily dwelling and parking area. Planning Commission February 17th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-18 to authorize the special use of 1621 Grove Avenue and 1617 Real Grove Avenue for a multifamily dwelling and parking area. Planning Commission February 17th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-19 to authorize the special use of 26 North Morris Street for a restaurant with outdoor dining. Planning Commission February 17th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-20 to amend and re-adjain Ordinance Number 75-301-302 recently amended by Ordinance Number 2013-214-207 pertaining to the Stonepoint CUP to allow for further subdivision of Lot 3 within MAP Section A-1. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee February 17th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-25 to amend and re-adjain City Code concerning the partial exemption of rehabilitated structures from real estate taxation for the purpose of revising the City Rehabilitation Tax Credit Program. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee February 17th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-26 to name an alley bound by South 14th Street, Exchange Alley, South 13th Street, and East Carey Street as First Freedom Center Alley. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee February 17th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-21 to amend and re-adjain City Code concerning partial tax exemption and redevelopment and conservation areas and rehabilitation district for the purpose of removing the Sunset provision. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee February 19th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-28 to authorize the CAO to accept $600,000 from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development and to appropriate the amount to a new line item for the purpose of providing a grant or loan to either the Black History Museum or Cultural Center of Virginia, or is designated to facilitate the rehabilitation of the Lee Street Armory at 122 West Lee Street. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee February 19th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-29 to authorize the CAO to execute a First Amendment to lease of property between the city and Lehigh Cement Company LLC for extending the lease and increasing the amount of rent. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee February 19th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-30 to provide for the amendment of Section 31 of the Service Agreement by the Sumson Creek Regional Jail Authority. of rehabilitated structures from real estate taxation for the purpose of revising the city rehabilitation tax credit program. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 17th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-26 to name an alley bound by South 14th Street, Exchange Alley, South 13th Street, and East Carey Street as First Freedom Center Alley. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 17th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-27 to amend and re-adjain city code concerning partial tax exemption and redevelopment and conservation areas and rehabilitation district for the purpose of removing the Sunset provision. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, February 19th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-28 to authorize the CAO to accept $600,000 from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, and to appropriate the amount to a new line item for the purpose of providing a grant or loan to either the Black History Museum, or Cultural Center of Virginia, or is designated to facilitate the rehabilitation of the Lee Street Armory at 122 West Lee Street. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, February 19th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-29 to authorize the CAO to execute a First Amendment to lease of property between the city and Lehigh Cement Company LLC for extending the lease and increasing the amount of rent. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, February 19th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, February 23rd. Ordinance Number 2015-30 to provide for the amendment of Section 31 of the Service Agreement by the Sumson Creek Regional Jail Authority for the purpose of better enabling the city and other jurisdictions who are members of the authority to use the jail by modifying the restrictions on inmates that can be sent to the jail. Public Safety Standing Committee, February 23rd at 5:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, March the 9th. Ordinance Number 2015-31 to erect always stop signs at the intersection of South Shepherd Street and Maplewood Avenue. Land Use Housing and Transportation Committee, March 17th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, March the 23rd. Resolution Number 2015-R6 to approve an expenditure of $16.32 from the Council District Funds to pay the Department of Information Technology for the mailing of letters to 5th District residents. Council Public Hearing, February the 9th. Resolution Number 2015-R7 to approve $49.83 from the Council District Fund to pay Department of Information Technology for the printing of posters for the 5th District Holiday Party. Council Public Hearing, February the 9th. Resolution Number 2015-R8 to amend Resolution Number 2008-R152-2009-14 requiring the application of green high-performance building standards to all city construction projects and incentive programs to encourage the private sector to apply green high-performance standards to implement the recommendation of the Green Building Commission concerning standards for the construction of city-owned building and facilities with costs of $5 million or less or for new building construction and renovations to existing buildings or facilities that are less than 10,000 square feet. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 17th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, February 23rd. Resolution Number 2015-R9 to request the CAO to provide counsel and the city planning commission with written notification of building permits, applications completed for properties identified for acquisition, and the city's master plan within seven working days. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 17th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, February 23rd. Resolution Number 2015-R10 to amend the zoning ordinance to make changes to regulate textile recycling collection bins, and to request the CAO to conduct a study to determine how to lawfully regulate such bins. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 17th at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, February 23rd. Resolution Number 2015-R11 to request the CAO to negotiate an agreement with GRTC to lease property formerly known as the Bus Barn for public parking and community event purposes. Governmental Operations Standing Committee, February 26th at 5:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, March the 9th. Madam President, that concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay, late start for the meetings. I didn't get started till 6:25 due to the fact that we had a long informal meeting, presentation by the school board, and quite a bit of discussion on the various papers for tonight. But we started at 6:25, got to the awards and presentations, only one tonight, and that was naming Richmond African-American History Month, the month of February. And that was presented by the mayor and our council president. Got the agenda review, the consent agenda, and that was approved 9-0. There were no items left on the regular agenda. Then we got to amend and continue. And after that, there was a paper on the consent agenda renaming the Manchester Courthouse in honor of Henry Marsh and Harold Marsh. And there was a request to allow people to speak, because they didn't realize they could speak at that time when they called for speakers on the consent agenda. So, we had eight people come down and speak about Henry Marsh and about his brother Harold Marsh, and then with renaming the courthouse building in Manchester on the south side of Richmond. Then we got to the expedited consideration, one paper, and that was stating the council's opposition to any changes in state law recording the authority of the airport to set an access fee and rent for businesses. That took about, oh, I'd say about almost 20 minutes before it finally was approved by a 9-0 vote. Then we got to the approval of ministry reports from council. And tonight, President Mosby requested that they do the citizen's comment after the reports from council. And so, we finally got to that. We had three speakers, and then the introduction of papers, and now we are adjourned. A little quieter tonight than it was the last meeting. And our next regularly-scheduled meeting is two weeks from tonight, on February 9th. We'll be on the air at 5:45. So, until next time, fore gavel to gavel, I'm Dick Harmon saying goodnight.